As required by the meetings act nineteen seventy five, I had noticed this meeting was provided on January twelfth, two thousand twenty three by publication and notice in express times. Said notice in this building on the same date, Mayor Barseny?
Here.
Mister Baylor, Mister Beam?
Yeah.
Mister McDermott?
Yeah.
Mister Leibert? Mister Finelli?
To give us though for record, Baylor said it'd be here about one minute. Welcome, everybody. We have a Saint Patrick's party here back. Okay. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, February sixteenth, the executive session meeting minutes of twenty, of all the twenty forty. Roll call. Or anybody anything pulled or corrected? Roll call?
Mayor Barseny?
Yeah.
Mister Beam?
Yes.
Mister Finnell?
Yes.
Mister McDermott? Yes.
I'm making a motion when we accept the Treasury report in the February bills list. To go in a second? Seconding. Any other questions, comments, any of the pulls?
Comments, that's all. And Bill, this one's actually generated more people. I, I see that our IT companies got one in here for like almost eleven grand and another one for like three, but I know I don't look over those POs because the Darwin.
I didn't see, see those POs weren't in my folder here.
Well, I, I, have you been watching them right along or? Yeah, okay, that's all I was asking. I, you know, I mean, if you see him and you're looking at, I was just kind of curious. And then the last one is the, uh, the chief, Atlantic Tactical. Was that one officer gearing up or was that multiple?
Uh, great.
Great, okay.
Uh, there's a couple of land tactical, but the largest sum there was the three boat, they have three boats.
Okay. Wow, three boat. Wow. Man, that's a, okay.
But perfect, you need it. Okay, that's it. Anybody else have any questions, comments? Roll call, is it?
Mayor Barseny?
Yes. 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 Looking for a motion to accept the tax, tax collector's tax review report for February. I'll make it.
A second.
Any questions, comments, discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Barseny?
Yeah.
Mister Beam?
Yes.
Mister Finnell?
Yes.
Mister McDermott? Yes.
Chief, do you have anything you want to add to your reporter?
Another busy month for arrests, I just wanted to take for the public, uh, they're not seeing it before. Uh, we did have, uh, one thousand three hundred eighty-four calls with citizens and thirteen adult arrests, two drunk driving arrests, hundred ninety-nine traffic summonses, four parking summonses. Detective Bureau clearing three of their four additional cases that they received. And our overtime was, uh, pretty, uh, extremely low from last year. Sixty-three hours compared to last year's one hundred eight and a half hours. Uh, and the, I know I didn't send it out, but the comparison of the overtime from last year is, uh, quite a big difference. And, uh, just wanted to let you all know that, uh, comparative, uh, from last year, uh, we are like twenty-five percent of where we were at last year, so, uh, big, big difference. And, you know, obviously credit that to the additional officer. We are running into a couple of officers with, uh, workman's comp, uh, one that recently went out and then one, uh, coming back from that, uh, that accident, uh, he's going to be back out again. Uh, so I just wanted to let you all know. And, um, also I did just want to know that our new officer is, uh, continuing to, uh, excel. He had a hundred and ninety traffic stops last month, eighty tickets issued and thirteen arrests. That's, that's a lot for, for one officer, uh, and, uh, can't be more proud of him.
Yeah, chief, would you say, I, I, I'm speaking for myself, but kudos, kudos. We appreciate his effort, yeah.
Yes.
But, you know, can we start getting a breakdown? The biggest problem this township right now for quality life issue, I think, is the truck traffic on roads that they're not supposed to be on. And I think I'd like to see a breakdown every month of how many trucks were stopped and how many summonses were issued to resolve those stops. Cause I think a lot of people question me and ask me about what's going with the truck, truck traffic. It's a quality of life issue, you know, and, uh, right now I, I think it's more important than any other aspects of the police department. I don't know that speeding is historically always a problem. You're always going to get complaints about my neighborhood, you're speeding or speeding. The irony of that is it's the people in neighborhood who are literally doing the speeding, but in this case, these trucks are coming through town. And I know you assign guys and making stops and stuff, but just making stops is not enough. I think they need to be issuing summonses. I know we can't make them do it, but I think we should put it out there so the public knows what the police department is doing about it. It's the biggest quality of life issue in the township right now, and I think they deserve an explanation of what's being done.
Yeah, normally I would have that number, I pull that.
Yeah, I know. I'm just saying, from now on, I'd like to have, I'd like to see that included every month.
I will add that to the report.
Thanks.
And we definitely, chief, the only other question I kind of got just because we have some folks here that might, your, your calls and incidences was one thousand three hundred and eighty-four. But if you do the math here for what is noted here and everything else like that, it's only up around seven hundred and sixty-three. What is the other six hundred or so?
So.
Incidences that, that pay off that?
A large majority is going to be all the traffic stops. They're going to be in there, so basically you're going to take right off the bat, you can take, uh, about five hundred and sixty traffic stops.
All right, so the traffic stops that don't end up with a warrant or summons aren't reflected, right?
Uh, no, that's the, the wood number I just gave you was our, our summonses and our warnings alone is over five hundred. And that doesn't, so that's about over five hundred stops. You're going to add a few more for ones that, uh, well, actually, no, you wouldn't.
Well, right, because the stops were five sixty-two and then your, your other incidences were like, uh, two hundred and three. So you add those two together and it comes up to seven sixty-three.
Yes, so you would have, uh, some other things like, uh, uh, you could have sexual assault, uh, I'm trying to think of what else is not on there. Uh, I'm just that off the back, I know that we had one last month. I think what a big thing to be because typically that's what I, I highlight there are the most.
And without having to get into it, you know, that's one, that's two, that's here, you know? It's not like six hundred, so I was just kind of curious. I mean, does an incident or a call, a tree branches down in the road, does that get listed as an incident?
That, yes, that would be.
Right. And you don't get documentation on that?
And not on your monthly report, if you want it, I could give you.
No, 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 I just.
The, the, uh, yeah, the problem is like there's so, I can't, category is huge of all of our different types of calls. So, um, I kind of tried to narrow that down because already the, uh, can only fit so much on there.
No, no, sure, well, I said, I'm just looking, you know.
I'm going to give, what's this other six hundred? Yeah, I'll, I will, uh, I'm going to look up what the, uh, what the rest of our call time is and I'll kind of give you an idea of what that other breakdown is.
Fair enough.
Chief, uh, the majority of the warnings, what are they? You have three hundred and fifty-nine.
I can't tell you one thing in particular. It could be, it could be, uh, speeding, it could be stops on, uh, rolling stop. Uh, yes, they're all, all, all the warnings would be motor vehicle. Well, I shouldn't say all, there could be something with some township ordinances, um, but we don't generally get too, too many of those. Usually in the winter we'll get a lot of those for like people that, uh, don't show the sidewalk or there's snow on the road because typically we don't issue a lot of summonses like that, we issue a lot of warnings with that.
Okay.
Um, but, uh, you know, as a kind of a first warning thing. Uh, but, yeah, generally you can categorize those as traffic.
Great, thanks. Thanks, chief. Yeah. Joe?
I'm looking to have our last.
Any questions, CPW from the report?
No.
Now, should clerk report, anybody have any questions, or at least do you have anything you wanted to add?
I don't, unless you have any questions.
Please, it's just, if you can put the fire under them, nothing, you know, whatever, whatever the freehold on the commissioner is working on that health insurance current, I believe. In this call, and it's, you know, is it going to be a new point to look at it, you know, it's going to take two, three years? Do we have to start looking at it on our own, so? We can do it contemporaneously if you wanted to, you can start looking on our own and then see who comes up, yes, that's what the county, so if you want to do that. I don't know how we would start looking, you know, you're starting playing companies and lots of very, just.
Yeah, with such a small pool there, so.
So, it's the whole problem. Actually, nobody, I think, don't even, don't even have anything other than likes of getting like reports.
It is.
Court report? Oh, you have anything to add to it?
Uh, no, I, I kind of glanced through it, it, it seemed to be, it's normal. So.
And the ACO report, there was no calls. You know, if we would have one of those services, we would pay every month. Whether it has something or not. You know? Okay. Anybody want to make a motion to accept the police department report, the Department of Public Works report, the township clerk report, the zoning code enforcement report, the court report, the ACO report?
I'll make that motion.
Anybody want a second?
My second.
Any more further questions or comments? Roll call.
Mayor Barseny?
Yes.
Mister Beam?
Yes.
Mister Finnell?
Yes.
Mister McDermott? Yeah.
Committee reports, Willie, do you have any report?
I don't.
Phil? School report, I'm going to defer to our rep over there, the only thing that, I left my notes, but I do recall the current budget for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, and if I'm wrong, let me know, is it about a hundred and sixty-two dollar increase? Somewhere around a hundred and sixty-two.
Yeah, you asked the question about a two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar home.
Yeah.
Answer to that question, yes.
Yeah.
Two point zero zero one one increase. And it's about fifty-eight dollars per hundred thousand dollars. So on a two hundred thousand dollar home, that would be one sixteen, a three hundred, one seventy-four, a four hundred, two thirty-two.
Now, you're also having auditors come in to audit both buildings. Is that for maybe a referendum? Failed to ask that question.
Well, we're not sure where we're going to go. We did get a slight increase in our, uh, funding. And, um, we have, uh, I'm saying Maria. Tina, thank you. She was bringing back some out of district kids, which is great because that's kind of her specialty. So we're going to save a lot of money there, we're even going to start a new autism class. But so that kind of saved us, so we didn't have the deficit that we thought we were going to have. But we still have a lot of structural things that need to be done at the school, and that's why the architects are coming in and they're going to go through both schools and kind of let us know what we're going to patch what we can, when we can, and until we get that audit and see what can wait, what can't wait. Then we'll have to make the decision at that point. But right now we're just kind of focusing on the current budget and, you know, being set for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. But any of those items, unless they tell us that there's something like the HVAC.
Right.
We've been patching that for years now.
Right.
Unless they tell us that there's something that we absolutely have to address immediately, then, uh, any of those repairs that we can push to the following year will do that. So, we just have to wait and see.
The other thing was the, uh, switching the voting, and we discussed at our last meeting, moving it over to the elementary school. But I think it'd be a better bet to move it over to the middle school where there won't be a traffic issue. It's, it's almost impossible at two-thirty in the afternoon to to get anywhere near that, uh, elementary school, so. You know, I don't know what the committee's thought is about moving the polling places to, uh, the middle school.
And did you?
And you, and using the, yeah.
You were going to ask them.
Yeah, they seem in favor of it, I, nobody objected last time when I brought that subject up, so, you know. Can we arbitrarily move the polling place? They're going to check the board of elections.
That's what we're doing, yeah.
We have no power to move them, so Bill Duffy has to do it.
Right. And Bill, the, the, the traffic at the, uh, middle school is.
You won't have the, uh, if you're, you're going to go towards the, uh, the neighborhood, which is to the left.
Right.
So where in the, uh, elementary school, you're going to the front of the building and then, you know, starting at two-thirty till about what, quarter after?
No, no, no. I've been up in there, it's a challenge, it takes a while to get through there.
Yeah, so, but that, was that whole school, they're like that?
Yeah, they're all kind of. Well, I was just wondering why the middle school.
Excuse me, it's less of a problem.
Okay.
Yeah. So.
Would they have the day after this children?
I don't think so. Wasn't when I was a kid. The John F. Kennedy School, right? Anything else, Vicki?
Uh, the only other thing is there is going to be family fun night, and that's going to be not just open to the parents and the kids, but it's for the, you know, the community, that's going to be on May fifth. Uh, also, oh, getting back to what you were saying, Bill, on May tenth, um, we're going to have a town hall, and Tina's going to have a town hall meeting, and they're going to actually discuss the findings of the architect and the budget going forward to the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So the public will be able to get all that information at that town hall.
Send me that email and we'll get, we should have posted on our website as well.
Okay, we'll do.
That it, Ben?
That's it.
I, I do have a question, and I don't know if Bill and Vicki can address it or not address it, it's just what I heard, and I, I don't want to misspeak about it. The solar that's on both of the schools has failed, and one of its caused, one of the installs has caused a leak?
That would be correct. So the leak is in the new building, which is an old building now, and if, and on the older building, which is the middle school, I don't think it's generating anything either. The two bills I looked at, uh, the other day was
Not working out the way the.
Twenty-one thousand, you know, for a month of electricity, so certainly the solar is not working. Uh, I did speak to Renee yesterday, and it's been sold so many times, you know, the, the original, I think it was out of Canada, they went bankrupt, it was sold to another company.
Well, that's what I heard, that the company that we were in is also doesn't exist anymore, so.
Right, right, so they're trying to see who, kind of like Rio Tinto with their water, you find the person with the deepest pockets.
Right.
And then you, you know, after so.
I had heard that, I just wasn't, I didn't want to misspeak because I've not always been the biggest sole proponent, I'm not facing the earth, right? Hey. I'm just adding to my notes, right?
Okay, that is that, Vicki? Okay, thanks. Paul, you got any report?
Uh, just a little, uh, two things, with the environmental commission, Bob Betrison recently reached out, uh, we were trying to see what kind of emissions reports are on warrant materials our asphalt company, and apparently there's not much if anything. Um, so we're going to look into that a tad bit deeper. Um, and squad related, our, our ambulance, ninety-eight fifty-two, which is now, uh, twenty-one years old. Um, however, several of us think it's a a solid unit yet, and we were backed up by that, we do have it with a specialist right now. Um, it is probably going to cost about twenty-five thousand dollars to get it backed up to snuff so that we can get it state licensed. Um, but with that being said, they felt that we were adding another five to ten years with it, so that's kind of a good thing. You know, because these ambulances now with all the equipment in them and stuff like that are a quarter of a million dollars. Um, so we were pretty, pretty happy about that result, so.
That, that's it, okay. Professionals, Mike? Labor, Finelli?
Good. Which Mike? I'll start, uh, the DOT grants, uh, Rick line again is done, we should get the final check shortly, uh, we're, Shannon, do you anything come from the DOT recently? Oh, good, there we go, got the last chunk of our mind, very good. Uh, Beatty's Road, which is the last two years, any decision with that as far as if we're going to go forward?
Not worried about it.
Still be, still being determined?
Right.
Okay, it's not a, still, and that you're being discussed, okay? I'll bring it up next month. And, uh, lastly, and this, this relates to the new storm sewer regs and what's called the MS four permit. The, the state and thankfully for all the towns, um, have come up with a grant program to help uh, reimburse, well, no, it's not even a reimburse, that's wrong, wrong term, help out with the costs associated with the implementation of these new regs and compliance. Now, we are, we've always been a tier A, if you recall, and we're staying at tier A. The tier Bs, which is a lot of the towns in the county, they've got a much bigger lift on their hands to, to comply. They are able, uh, and eligible for a seventy-five thousand dollar grant. The tier As, which is us, that are just have a few more things to do, the grant is twenty-five thousand. So, we've already made the submission, uh, and that's going to have to be something we'll talk about, you know, moving forward this year. But there will be, um, the twenty-five thousand dollars in grant monies to, to the town is ten thousand when you make the application and fifteen thousand when we're finished with the deliverable, which is a a new plan. So, um, so that's a good thing. Uh, obviously, uh, there's no money out of anybody's pockets.
Is that going to be a continual? A year or is this the one?
No, it's one-shot deal. But after we finish the plan that we were required to complete to, to, uh, to comply with the new regs, I don't know what else will be to do, I mean, we've already got an outfall map and all the things, I won't bore you with the details, but, um, everybody's subject to this, um, it's just the question if you're a, a tier A and you're staying at tier A, or you're, you were a tier B and you're going to a tier A, so. So, I mean, that's a good thing.
Uh, we, we may be. Because we have a fifty thousand dollar repair on our road sweeper. And for everybody who doesn't know, when you're tier A, we're out there required mandatory sweeping the roads four times a year, right, Joe, man?
To the whole town twice, commercials once a month.
What, so, um, that four hundred thousand dollar sweeper you see out there, that is how old, Joe?
Nineteen ninety-seven.
That's a bad, it's nineteen, wow.
Um, so, you know, it's due for a couple of repairs, but, you know, for fifty grand, it'll last us, how much longer, Joe?
Hopefully ten, fifteen.
There you go. So, I was just earmarking that twenty-five grand, not so much for paperwork, but for mechanical.
Does the state supposed to do this, like twenty-two then, then, once a month?
What does?
Does the state have to do street sweeping on like twenty-two, one seventy-three once a month?
The state and the county got different rules, regulations to follow.
I was going to say, because, because they just know, every time they just go, get three inches of salt.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And I never see a street sweeper.
Me either.
They're like Congress, I guess, right? They're always accepting their own laws, so. Joe, do we, um, lend that sweet, street sweeper out to other towns?
We don't lend it out, we operate it, you are, uh, a couple other towns, and we swap off work when we're paving, they bring trucks over. Uh, I, I've done Alpha a couple times a year, it takes about four days each year. Um, and they send men over, or when we got work, our guys over there and stuff, so they, we swap it off that way. Plus, we use their jetter, they got a small jetter trailer, we do the same thing with Polat. Polat only request, uh, asks for when they're paving roads and stuff.
Okay. I'm sorry, am I going to interrupt?
Oh, no, that, uh, that, that was it really. Just wanted to know, it's, it's good news because this grant really came out of nowhere, we said, we were all, when I said we, us engineers, we're all wondering because it would be a, you know, uh, there's a bunch of work to do and, uh, to, to force it down everybody's throat without a grant didn't seem right, so they, nine, nineteen million dollars of our tax dollars, by the way, towards this for statewide, the statewide program, so.
And we only got twenty-five thousand?
Oh, yeah, well, there's five hundred and sixty-five municipalities, so there's.
Yeah, I could do the math on that, if I did, it's more than twenty-five thousand, but that's all right.
Well, and, and that's all I got, unless anybody has any questions.
Mike Labor, you have any? You have any, you want a question about Comcast now, so then we get to that, maybe you're in the table in the, uh.
This ordinance, Mike, I thought they were going to come before. Comcast.
I, I'm assuming they're coming before you if we have the public hearing on it, but if we, we could have them come in between now and the, the public hearing. So they showed up one night, but that was for the right of way.
Right.
Which now, I've heard they're going to ask for additional changes to that, but I said, good luck. I don't think the committee, they're going to have much luck with that, but you know, because we changed to say that they had to come back to the town if they were going to do any excavating on anybody's property, so. Um, but we could just hold it and have, ask them to come in.
I'd rather see that, you know, because I, you know, I want to hear about the competition. You know, we have senior citizens, which some of us are, right? And, uh, you know, I like to see, you know, what they mean by competition.
Yeah, it's interesting because originally they were pushing because they wanted that right of way agreement so they could run their high-speed internet, you know, to the businesses. And then this was put on the back burner, and now they're really, you know, hot to trot on this one, so, um, Rob Clifton emails, uh, from Comcast, emails myself and the administrator once a week probably on this, so we'll just let them know.
Come on in.
Good show for the next, for the next.
I didn't, Mike? Know whether professional, Terry, I think we have any officers to bring up?
I have, um, some open space stuff we have to discuss, is that good? Is that coming up later or?
Maybe I don't have any also, it's good news.
Okay, so, Frank, I think everybody got this, uh, from Frank Pinto, um, the open space committee membership, uh, it's tough to get a nine-member board or committee. Uh, we're looking to drop it down to seven. So, um, is that an ordinance change or?
It would be.
Okay, so can we, you know, if the committee's in favor, can we, uh?
If we can't get nine, is this supposed to keep it at nine?
Right. So, uh, can we look for an ordinance change next month?
Sure.
Do we need to vote on that? I mean, just to.
You don't vote on that.
Good, right, so we have to vote on, right, with approval, yeah, well, actually after the first read, if the ordinance change.
And then we had a resignation from Ralph, Ralph Diaz, you know, so, uh, uh, there was a note about the Dominguez Trail East. And then, uh, the lacrosse rebound wall, the, uh, committee is asking the township to post the bid proposal uh, to post a bid proposal and to post it on our township we- website. So.
Well, I, I moved one item up, then I they asked the appointment area to blow for the open space. So, do we do that now?
You can do it whatever.
Okay.
Yeah. And the other thing is the, um, purchase order for the playground equipment.
Mm-hmm.
Is that in the packets? Should, uh?
No, I can't pay it until it's done. It's done, is there invoice, is there? I'm not paying something that isn't completed.
It's done, applying on it.
They are?
Yes.
Okay. Can I get a invoice from someone?
I'll, I'll email them, I've been in the email chain.
Thank you.
I'll get a hold of them.
It'll be on the inter, those are the next.
What's that? Yeah, this one's back, uh, I don't know, the vendor signed it back on February twenty-first, of course, it was then installed.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the price that's within there, that's all.
All right, that's open space, oh, the one other thing for open space, they're considering putting lights, uh, around the basketball court. So, not everybody's in favor, the majority of the open space, I believe, is in favor, if there's one or two that have questions. What is the feeling of the township committee of putting? What is the feeling of the township committee of putting, uh, lights on the courts behind us here?
I'm okay, but I talked about it ever since we talked about resurfacing that. I think it's great for, uh. For adults, you know, like a night after, uh, work, so. I've always been for it. I know, I'm speaking for myself.
Is it necessary that we let the neighbors know that? We're considering putting lights in their backyard? I don't think we need their permission. I mean, close that it been a. Okay, you know, I'm fine with that, you know.
I don't think it's any brighter than when the firehouse is lit up when they have a grill or something.
Okay, so I'll let the OS know. That's it. Maybe also any other new business?
Um, since we're talking with Frank Pinto's group here and everything else like that. Can we get, because Frank is most related to our farmers and the leases and things of that nature. I'd like to reach out to. The farmers that have. Left massive piles of brush. I mean, I know the process was done over here and it got burned a couple of years later. Um, I, I'd like to know what their plan is, particularly the pile on one seventy-three in South Main Street. Because that is. Clearly a very large disturbing looking one, but at the same rate, Hurlem and Road. And, uh, uh, Willagrove Road, you know, it's just. It's hundreds and hundreds of yards long. You know, I mean. Farmers are supposed to be stewards of our land, so to speak. I'm not sure, I haven't seen that. Um, if we could put out a little note, you know, that says, hey. You know, I mean, because they get the burning permit, they can do this. They've got the machinery, put it in the field, burn it, gone. Uh, versus looking at. Areas that are harboring. Anything. You know, so that's all. Is that something that Frank could do or is that something like that your office should do or?
We could do it. I just think Frank has all of those.
I'd probably be a tad bit more forward about it, but you know, uh, let's do it politely and.
Yeah, you know, it's a lot friendlier coming from Frank Pinto.
Exactly, so, okay. I'm not sure that's not a, a, a lease piece. That we have. I don't think it is. I think we're a little bit further back. I, I mean, I know who's farming it, but I don't wanna.
I know on Hurlem, which I live on Hurlem, and I don't think they had any intentions of ever getting rid of that.
No, I don't think so, neither, which is why. Because when they do have intentions of getting rid of it, it's in a pot. And that is clearly not in a pot.
Right, and there was a burn there with weeds. I, I personally think it looks better now than when, when all those weeds.
Uh, but anyway, uh, it's the same farmer in both cases, but, uh. But you know, I, I'd like to see you do something about it.
I'll give him a call.
Did everybody have a chance to review resolution thirty-six twenty-three? About the draft policy for development, the running development?
Yes. I think it's a great idea. Matter of fact. Somebody from Lopet, I don't know, uh, he might be on their land use board, uh, sent us and he sent me and Brian an email. I, what is this resolution about? I just briefly gave it. Two sentence thing of what it is. He goes, oh, that sounds real good. So. Maybe other towns will follow.
This is something when I make a motion to adopt resolution thirty-seven.
Thirty-six dash twenty-three.
I'll second it.
And we have any questions, comments about it? I like it because it, you know, pretty much develops a policy on how they have to approach things. Okay, roll call. Orders one and two, twenty twenty-three, we're going to table. Updating the bracers on the walking task.
I spoke to Josh after our last meeting and he is actually out of country until the twentieth, so he'll take care of that when he gets home.
Bowling places, are we done talking about that or we? Yeah, I think it's in the county here now, yeah. Little resource officer, we have any updates on that? We're gonna have to see what's happening.
We have a, uh, class of interviews on Monday. And, uh. Background being conducted on the other interview and we'll, uh. Have an answer, I would hope with everything by the end of the month, the next week hopefully with, uh. I did speak with the superintendent today and, uh, this, uh, kind of went over. Getting, uh, things started in a school. Not really actually being in this row, but. Uh, going through the grant for the school bullying and violent, uh, officer. So, uh, we had a pretty productive discussion, uh, to be. Uh, in good hands, uh, at the end of the month, like I said.
Field scheduling guide.
That was the, um, that came from the rec. That was Brian, Mr. Baylor's. And we compared it against the code and the only real discrepancy was their field scheduling guide includes courts. Which in my opinion, the code anticipates like fields and the pavilion, so. Clearly, I think it includes courts, so that was really the only discrepancy between the, because. You had just asked me to take a look and make sure that the scheduling guide was in conformers with what we have in the code.
The facility update, anybody have anything?
So only what we know about the review and return back from the county.
I spoke to, uh. Commissioner Cisler, but I ain't about that and that. She's gonna look into, I told her we were okay with the signs, you know, doing the signs and. I explained to her about, we're only moving a quarter mile up this road and, uh. Whole thing about the apron being, has to be wide because they don't want our trucks on their road. When we're turning around, they're backing in, so she said, you know, that makes sense, there's gonna look into it and see what she can do, so.
But for your request, I did speak to Chris this afternoon and.
And I had Lisa follow up with her assistant because I'm talking to her on the phone and I know she's not taking notes and I'm, I'm not taking notes. So I told her to call and make sure that she can understand exactly what we wanted, so, or asking for it. Fire hydrants, I see Aqua has made us an offer.
Yes, I note that there were no calculations as to how that was arrived at.
I was gonna say to Joe, Joe, does this make, does this number make any sense to us? Going, I guess it's a.
Yeah, I don't know if it's either by the number of hydrants by eighteen. See what the number is.
And then the number of hydrants that weren't working.
But, but with that being said, I think this is only a partial bill because I thought we did pay. A respectable amount more. Yearly. Isn't the hydrant number? About a hundred and twenty-eight? Something like that.
Think we had made one payment?
We did.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so they're really trying to. Well, right, you know, we've got a payments worth of full spread on bad hydrants, right?
Well, we've been paying for years, so how long have they not been working?
Yeah, that's what Joe was just saying. But I think that's the thing, we can, if we take the number for the year divided by the number of hydrants. And then you can figure out on a per hydrant basis, and they're just offering for twenty twenty-two, and I don't know. We didn't know what. The condition was.
I had tested when they told me they were in service. I made phone calls. They were non-responsive. Oh, really? That, that's my biggest pet peeve with them is they blow me off.
I think they owe us a little bit more then. Yeah, then sharpen their pencils.
And just remember, you know, and I know you know, remember this, but. They initially wrote, uh, well, first of it, they ignored us, and then when they finally wrote back, they said. Well, they're in fine working order, you're wrong, so please pay our bill, and then. They didn't know that Joe had talked to their foreman out there who said, oh, yeah, we found that the valve was. And when I wrote him back and said that, that's when we got the.
I'll tell them they just need to sharpen that number just a little bit more.
Joe, when did those hydrants go into, uh, it was sort of right in front of my house. I don't remember. It's been, Mike, it's two years since in our development?
Three years? Well, I think it's probably three years. It's probably two years since it's been done, but it's, it's. The hydrants were installed a year before that, so I say three years.
So, you know, and then.
I'd like those point Eric Blum to the open space committee and looking for the committee to approve that appointment, so.
You're making that.
I'll make the motion, you're second. Anybody questions, comments, discussion? Roll call, Lisa? Budget date, meeting dates. Is anybody good for the twenty-ninth or equal twelve? Two dates we're looking at for holding budget.
We could do both, that would be.
Yeah, I'm good. Are they both Wednesdays?
Lisa, I'm on vacation the twenty-one. Unless you want me to call from Reno, I will.
And there's no way we can get any Saturdays.
Yeah, it's a big bowling town.
Would Tammy come?
What's the other one, the twenty-ninth?
If Shannon's not gonna be available. The twelve sounds good though, right, for everybody?
Wednesday the twelfth, yeah. And is that your motion, Bob?
Well, the twenty, there's twelve so far. Well, we don't need a motion.
No, I'll just, uh, I'll talk to John Mooney about other dates. Those are the only two I could with them, so.
Then you could send some out to everybody. Any correspondence we need to go over? Uh, Warren County Municipal and Charitable Conservancy Trust. So the question is, they're looking for somebody from Greenwich Township? That's kind of how I read this. Do we have any volunteers?
I, I would consider it, but I don't want it to become another part-time job. Well, there's only, and I'm not quite, well, there's only four meetings, but there's questions over here that, are you willing to serve on a committee? Or work on a specific project through the coming year? Uh, it, it sounds like a part-time job.
Paul, it'll look good on your resume.
Yeah, at sixty-four years old, I don't need a resume. I'm gonna be sixty-five, so I got, I got to. I, I, I mean, I have some interest in it, but like I said, I don't want it to be. Yeah, you know, I'm not, yeah, I am wanting, I'm coming, but, um. When you get involved in these things, uh, there's a lot of time.
Lisa, can you call him and ask him how much time, you know, with, you know?
I mean, I'm doing a miserable job as our delegate to.
You know, if they have some type of like historic event to. They want it to show up at it, you know?
I don't think it's, I think they're just looking for input about how the county and what we can do. Uh, fund opens, uh, farmland and such.
The biggest, uh. Thing that they do is when they, uh, receive and review grant applications that towns make for their. Program. That ends up taking up a bunch of time because you've gotta go out to the sites. And see all the sites that are submitted and, uh, you know, I've been on the, the flip side of that, uh, so. When you're in the middle of the grant program, I think you're probably spending a reasonable amount of time, including like Saturday. Things like that. Uh, otherwise the meetings, it's only a once a quarter.
Well, they showed four meetings. It was really into the summer, right? Wasn't even once a quarter. I saw that, but I just, I just said to myself, I know that there's a lot more. Involved in.
And it could be anybody from the township. I don't think it.
No, it does not have to be elected, but I, I don't think so.
Well, well, then I might know somebody that might be very interested in that, then. Okay.
I'm gonna ask Greg Blaska if he, uh, is interested, but.
Well, um, we have a youngin who's not, not a super youngin, but he's been showing more and more interest about getting involved in certain things and everything. And that would be, uh, Ryan Haggerty. You know, um, that might be right up his line. I mean, he already currently works for the Warren County Mosquito Commission and such. You know, he's on our environmental, uh, committee and such. Um, I, I, I would certainly approach him about that. Um, I know he's. They own a big patch of Greenwich and. Right, his family does and stuff, and he's been around farming most of his life, yeah, so. Um, he might be interested in that.
I'll make a motion, we'll open public comment. All favor. Anyone from the public wishes to come to the stage, you have to come up here, state your name, address, and we don't answer questions, just making your statements.
Bob Bruce, eleven Harwich Road, can you hear me okay? I'm from Lopeco, so I'll hold it again. I'm a senior member in age of, of the friends from Lopeco that have attended here tonight. Uh, uh, it's my honor to be the first to say thank you. Greenwich, being the only sane township. Amongst our shared community. Uh, as the junior member in terms of length of the fight against the irresponsible and short-sighted development. That has originated in Lopeco before proliferating seemingly everywhere. Well, in that year and a half that I've been joining my Lopec friends, attending and speaking out at Lopec and Polat meetings. Well, there was never a need to attend or speak out at a meeting in Greenwich. Why is that? It's because we all knew where this community stood. We knew you was, where you, where you stood when it came to warehouse brawl. We knew about your button-down, rock-solid, just say no to warehouses that you have in your master plan. So we're here tonight, dressed in green, as you say, now for St. Patty's Day. But for your decision to keep the green in Greenwich, we want to honor you. So thank you. I also wanted to thank. Uh, you for your polite, professional and respectful police. Whenever we've called about illegally parked trucks, they responded and they rousted them. Uh, and not only that, you people, this committee saw to it that swift enforcement action was taken. We made a call to your police about tractor trailers parked in a Morris Canal path parking lot on Strikers Road. Within a week, not much more than that, there were signs erected there prohibiting truck parking. Boom, swift enforcement. When a call was made to your police about tractor trailers parking overnight. On the default SMP lot on five nineteen, those police not only responded. But they called back. To inform that, wow, again, you people, this committee had issued a cease and desist order to SMP. So again, within a week and not much more, there were concrete barriers that were mentioned to SMP. Boom, western foster. So I just wanted to come through for you tonight and say thank you in person for the job that you've been doing. I know I speak for all my friends here. If it were possible to pick up our Lopec houses and move to Greenwich, we'd do so without a second thought. Of bow and thinking, honestly open, local government. I, I'm blown away when I saw here tonight. It's something we don't get to enjoy. Finally, I'd like to apologize to Greenwich for all the crazy, short-sighted crap that's been exported from Lopec. And dumped on the Greenwich. It's a shame and a crime what they've done to us and more so what they've done to you, Dave Davis. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Getterson, thirty-eight, Jade Lane, uh, Lopeco. I've also attended all of the, uh, Lopeco meetings with Bob and some other folks and it is a big departure between. Uh, their meetings and the meetings and the meeting here. Uh, Mayor, when you started the meeting, the first thing out of your mouth was you're, you're. Mayor, when you started the meeting, the first thing out of your mouth was you're, you're concerned about the quality, quality of life issues. For your citizens that these trucks are bringing on. Onto them and, you know, ask the chief to, you know, keep that statistic so you can analyze that. Prior to coming over here tonight, I was in Alpha and I thought, oh gee, I really don't want to do, I tell a lot of these, these town meetings, I really don't feel like. Going through another meetings, we're coming up five nineteen up to the intersection by Shammer School there, a double trailer. A tractor trailer, it's like, this has got to stop. So that was really what picked me the butt a little bit to say, I am definitely attending this many tonight, to say thank you, because. As Bob pointed out, you know, between your master plan, your ordinances, training, things like jig breaks, parking. Illegal truck parking and stuff like that, as well as the enforcement. Of keeping these, you know, trucks off. Out of, out of lots and off the side of the roads where they really shouldn't be. It seems right now that other towns in the area, oh, one more thing. When the six months ago, I emailed you mayor, as well as the mayors of Lopeco, Polhatko, Alpha and Peaberg, asking. A couple of questions about the warehouses, and you were the only one kind enough to respond, and I appreciate that. But while other towns in the area are scrambling to find every square inch of farmland that they can build yet another warehouse on. You guys are actually protecting not only the safety of your citizens, but the quality of life of your citizens. And I don't know if the citizens of Greenwich fully understand that. But I'm sure that they appreciate it, and I, coming from Lopeco, I appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? You're in green also.
It would be helpful, Bill Galian, thirteen Martin Swallow Court. I'd be interested to hear some background on resolution. Thirty-six, one hundred and three.
Anyone want to answer that? Anybody else want to make a public comment? I make a motion, we close public comments? All favor? We've been ironically, we just talked about, we've been contacted. By lawyers and stuff, developers, trying to. Well, we kind of feel circumvent the process that's established in the township, they want to meet with me personally, or one of the committee people. To pitch their. Proposal, and we all feel that. They should do, if they want to do something, you go to land use board, either you're conformance with the plan, you ask them for the variance or zoning change. It goes there and if it eventually gets up to us, but we don't want to take the land use board out of the process. Of these discussions. That's pretty much what caused it.
What, what I? Thank you.
Does it answer your question, answer it, or?
Yes, it does.
That, that's all, it's, it's, it's just to prevent them from trying to.
Yeah, I was just concerned that maybe it was, I was thinking about individual property owners, they have an idea. They want to know, yeah, they don't.
Well, we have the right to accept some of them, if you read, you don't have. Okay, yeah, we, we can, we've been, we can determine to either meet with them. Not meet with them, or refer them to the land use board. And I do anticipate we are going to meet with some when we get into this area of in need of redevelopment, because. We may be looking for a specific type of businesses and stuff there, so we're not limiting our ability. To still negotiate and speak and talk with people, but. On, on, on those type of projects, but. We were there for a couple of months. We had lawyers really call a lot, just trying to circumvent, we kept saying, just go land, and they would do everything except go to the land use board. So I think we just wanted to memorialize the process, so, you know. But we didn't surrender any of our. Thank you.
My question is, did Phillipsburg, Alpha, and rest of the surrounding townships? How much has your taxes gone down? With the warehouses, you know? Has it gone down at all? I don't think so. Saying, hey, my taxes went down. Did your taxes go down? No?
Did they go up? They didn't necessarily go up, but.
Yeah, so they stabilized it, and, and the other thing, did they get a pilot program? You know, where. Yeah, I don't understand why they do pilots, they're dying to build them, why, why would you give them a, I just don't understand.
And they're putting it on.
Everybody.
An area that doesn't need rehabilitation like our Route twenty-two where the old almond tree was and all that other stuff, okay? That's an area that you need a rehabilitation like our old school, but farmland never needs to be rehabilitated, so. You know.
That was me that.
Didn't even see C on that.
We have no need for executive session, right, you know what I mean, first, Mike? Does anyone need anything in executive? No, Brian, just, you want to make the motion, do a jerk.